Oh.
Put my phones on vibrate.
Commissioner? Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Okay, Commissioner O'Malley, Commissioner Collie, you there?
Yes.
Okay, we're ready to go.
I convened this budget hearing of the Bertollio County Commission considering FY21 and FY22 budget presentations. Julianne, would you tell us who are the commissioners who are joining us by phone?
Commissioner Casada and Commissioner O'Malley are joining us telephonically.
Thank you. We're properly convened. Madam Caddie Manager, would you tell us what we're doing today?
Okay. Good morning, Commissioner Collie, Commissioner Casada, Commissioner O'Malley. It's, we're glad that you were able to join us and we really appreciate it despite what's going on in our county and in our, in the world, actually. But we're gonna, we're going to go ahead and proceed and as we, as, as trying to, trying to sort of, to acknowledge the new normal and continue our operations. So what we're going to be doing today is presenting the FY21, 22 biannual budget to you. And so this is going to be a general overview. We've met with all of you previously, kind of one-on-one. And so today, just know that there won't be any decisions made. This is simply a presentation, okay?
Thank you.
And of course, feel free to stop Shirley and I if you have any questions, okay? So again, this is, this meeting is, as you can see, there's no public here and this is just acknowledging the governor's directive for, to adhere to our social distancing. So, so anyway, I'm gonna go ahead and get started. So it's just going to be Shirley and I presenting today. And the primary focus will be the general fund. So the emphasis on key non-general funds will also be presented today and that's the behavioral health, the healthcare GRT, and the PILT funds. So just keep in mind that these three funds that I just mentioned are designated uses and these are designated uses that come from, from gross receipts tax. And so there's some key initiatives that will be, we would have been highlighting with the various departments and DCMs, but they are not here today. And again, this is going to be a very general overview of the budget and the revenue. So again, no final decisions will, will be made on the budget. The FY21, 22 biannual budget has not been finalized and the FY21, 22 budget adoption resolution will be presented for approval, we are hoping, on April 14th of 2020, you know, of course, unless things change. First thing, just, just again, a brief overview of what's going on. There's been lots of department collaboration and engagement, not just throughout the last, the past several months. So we always start very, very early and we have an amazing budget department that works with each of the departments and basically assessing priorities and, and ranking them accordingly, but always working with the department directors and with the, the DCMs. The balanced budget at this time is $533.8 million. And of this, 333.3 million come from the general fund, which is 4.5% higher than the FY20 approved budget. 8.5 million of, of the general funds come from, we call them sub-funds. So these are like the PILT fund, funding that comes in, the road funds, or any miscellaneous funding. Also, 192 million of non-general funds, which are primarily grants that the county receives, okay? So again, we remain fiscally responsible. I want to say that we, since my, let's see, when I became county manager over four years ago, my decision to make with the commissioners was we were always gonna take a conservative approach. And so we remain that way and I think it has served us very well. And I will tell you, Shirley Reagan, our DCM and the budget staff, they've done an amazing job. And I'm just gonna, before, I don't want to forget to say this, without them, we wouldn't be stable, we wouldn't be balanced, and of course, because of the support that we get from the commission. So I really appreciate it, Shirley. Also want you to note, to know that we are maintaining our 25% DFA reserve that's mandated. Also, there's, we're maintaining our 5% revenue stabilization operating reserve and that was per commission, that was through an AR in 2015, an administrative resolution. And also, we've opted, and this was something that we were, we saw a couple of years ago, Shirley and I had a discussion about our pension liability and the fact that we really need to start thinking about that and it's, that has really served us well. We are, we've got about $4 million in that unfunded pension liability reserve. Also, want to, you know, proudly let you know again, and, and I know you know this, but since this is a public hearing, we have maintained our AAA ratings on gen, on our general obligation bonds. And I just, again, that's something that we're all, as a county, we're very proud of. The gross receipts tax revenue bonds, we have a double A-plus rating that was reaffirmed on GRT bonds by all three rating agencies. So really-
I just want to interrupt you and say how terrific that is and delighted to be at a place that has a AAA rating. That's amazing. How many years has that been in effect? You came back to that.
Right. So to my knowledge, I know that, I, I will just say, so I started with the county in 2004 and we've never lost it and I don't know, Shirley, it's, it's been that way for many years. So I don't, I can't recall a time that we haven't maintained our AAA bond rating.
That's wonderful. Good for you.
Yes, Commissioner, even do, through the downturn that we had with the investments at that time, our then-county manager, deputy county manager of finance, Chesa Bird, and our county manager, Tom Zadonick, and Commissioner O'Malley went and met with the rating agencies and through all of that, we still maintained our AAA because they realized we were very serious about what we were trying to correct ourselves and make that adjustment, so.
Well, that's, that's exceptional. Thank you, Ms. Reagan.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Collie. So right now, we are on page eight and I'm just going to, again, go over this, it's sort of very generally, and I want to talk about our general fund revenue trend. So as you all know, the, most of our general fund revenue comes from gross receipts tax and property taxes. So, and if you look, if you, if you take a look at the, the growth from fiscal year 17 to 18, it can primarily be attributed to the 1/16th public safety and 1/8th hold harmless gross receipts tax that was enacted in fiscal year 18. And again, this is, this is just because our commissioners had the courage to do what they needed to do and went ahead and voted for, to increase taxes. I know that wasn't very popular at the time, but it was necessary and we are doing our very, very best to protect our budget and acknowledge that, you know, the public was, was having to pay just a little bit more on their taxes. So revenue growth after fiscal 18 was true economic growth, which is great. So if you just, again, the, the, the revenue from the gross receipts tax, again, has jumped up and the property tax is pretty level at this time, okay? So just generally. The trend, so, so if you go to page nine, the general fund revenue trend, the trending, the revenue trending flat or decreases for FY22. So these are just our other general fund revenues that come in. The gas and motor vehicle taxes are pretty steady. The fees and services are, for services are pretty consistent and that's because the commission has not had the will to increase our fees so that programs can be affordable and fees can be affordable to our, to their constituents and, and we understand that. Also, just to note, licenses and permits are going up and a lot of this is because of the franchise fees that our legal department, I'm gonna just give, give kudos to Ken Martinez, our county attorney, who worked very, very hard so that these, on these franchise fees. So that, I think we've been working on that for years. So we're able to collect some of that. And then also, we've got miscellaneous and grant reimbursement income and investment and interest revenue that comes in as well. I'm just pausing in case anyone else has, any of our other commissioners hasn't have any questions. So I'll move on to slide 10 for the FY21 and 22 general fund expenditures. This is mandated versus non-mandated services. So basically, for non-mandated services, this is 40%, 40, excuse me, 46% of all county operations are non-mandated services and, which equate to $155,230,000. Total mandated services is at 50%. So, and that is at $171,461,000. The mandated departments, so these include services from the assessor's office, the county commissioners, our clerk, Madam Clerk is here, the fire and rescue department, our MDC, Metropolitan Detention Center, our operations and maintenance department through Public Works, our probate judge, procurement and business services, our sheriff's department, our treasurer, and our youth services center. So just, you know, again, keep in mind that the majority of our services are mandated. If you go to slide 11 for FY and, FY21, 22, this is our health and public safety budget, total expenditures by revenue source. So we anticipate $215 million coming in, $215,981,000. And so, so 23 million of that is dedicated to our behavioral healthcare tax. There is 6% that goes into the healthcare tax and that is $13 million. And for our public safety tax, that's $13 million. That's another 6%. And if you all want to see just some detail, if you just really quickly go to page 26, there's a pie chart and it kind of gives you a breakdown of the allocations for the public safety tax. So again, this includes MDC, fleet, sheriff, fire. The majority of it also, keep in mind, goes into salary and benefits and that's applicable to all our budgets. And then real quickly, if you go to, we're on slide 12, just revenue and expenditure considerations, the continual fluctuations in state and federal funding. We need to consider the increasing healthcare and safety services costs. Of course, we have to keep up as a county with salaries, competitive salaries, the economic development funding that comes in and goes out, maintenance of county assets, we always want to make sure that those are maintained, our ongoing technology systems upgrades and improvements, and of course, the challenges that we're facing in this day and age with our cybersecurity and our nonprofit funding requests. So we also need to, you know, we also are very aware and sensitive to the needs of our community and the fact that we have a lot of great nonprofits who serve our communities. I just want to leave you with, you know, just a couple of things and I just want to reinforce, the county is strong, the county is stable, we are being fiscally responsible, we are, again, but being very conservative. And now, in our current situation, unfortunately, with the COVID-19 virus and the impacts it will cause, we're bracing ourselves. We're being realistic, we're not going to panic, we're going to carry on and we are going to, to continue to provide the services, the essential services to the public and we want to assure you commissioners and the public that we are doing just that and we are here, ready, still, serving them and we are here, will, will always be here for them and for each other. So if I, at this point, I stand for any questions and if there's no questions, I can turn it over to Shirley Reagan, our DCM, for finance.
Thank you, county manager. Do any of the commissioners on the phone have any questions? Then let's move on.
Yeah.
Yes?
Commissioner Casada, I was just wondering on the, on the MDC part, that's a $64 million, does that also include the overtime that we've been doing?
Yes. Commissioner Casada, yes, it does.
Does this also include the pay raises and things that we're trying to do for our officers at the MDC?
Commissioner Casada, yes, it, it certainly does. And what we're working on internally is, is we are anticipating coming to you and asking for increases for the, during fiscal year 21.
Okay, so that, so it does reflect that now?
It does. And Commissioner Casada, just so that you know, we are also anticipate, you know, this is an anticipation for union negotiations. We've got that actively going on and so we're talking, we're discussing that at this time. But just keep, we are keeping in mind, of course, that, you know, we need to be very conservative, but very careful, but we also need to be mindful that, you know, our employees have families and, and we need to be realistic. And so we're gonna do what we can to help them and we'll be coming to you in the near future regarding that.
I think just for the sake of people who may be watching, and I guess before I go into my next question, I want to make a quick comment. I'm sorry I'm not there today. I, I travel on the weekend and the last time I was on an airplane was seven days ago and I was in major airports and I just didn't want to be the person to expose people if, if I happened to run in contact to the virus. And so that is one of the reasons why I'm not in, in the building today. I just wanted to, you know, let everybody know that I'm, I've kind of quarantined myself for 14 days because I am the, the guy who's always traveling on airplanes and we don't really know what's going on with this virus. And so, just to be precautious, I'm doing this by phone. So with that being said, what, do you explain to me the difference between the behavioral health tax and the healthcare tax?
Yes, Commissioner Casada, Commissioner Collie. The healthcare GRT is an indigent fund, so it was a 1/16th that the county was approved with back in the 90s and we have to renew it every five years. And what that covers are indigent care type expenses. So we cover the MDC, a portion of the MDC medical contract for the inmates. We do some YSC medical contracts for the, the individuals at the youth detention center. There's some MATS for our new campus contracts, UNMH. So in your binder that you have, there is a sheet that kind of details all of that, but it's very strict, it has to be for indigent funds. The behavioral health GRT was a home harm, hold harmless increment, a 1/8th that the commissioners passed in 16, in 18 to cover the behavioral health initiative. So we segregate that and it, all the monies that get expended go through the behavioral health process. So Margarita, Travis and her team kind of administer and monitor that along with, those are the activities that have all the committees and they go through the ABCGC and then ultimately back to the commission for approval of the contracts and the initiatives that are funded out of that. But those are to help in the community, not to duplicate services that are already being provided, but to complement or come up with new types of services. So that's the difference.
Thank you for that. I think people want to kind of know what the difference is if they're, if they're watching, so I appreciate that explanation.
Shirley, let me ask a question. I, I always hear the words, "hold harmless," but have no idea what it means in, in-
Okay.
-applying to a tax.
Okay, Commissioner. What happened is when the state stopped taxing food and medical services, they implemented what they called "hold harmless." So because counties and municipalities-
Gotcha.
-collected those taxes and that was a part of their revenue stream, they said, "Although we're not gonna tax anymore, we're gonna hold you harmless. So we're gonna calculate what would have been, what you would have received from taxing food and medical and give that to you." There was a 15-year phase out, so by FY30, at 6% a year, they reduced that. So we have to take that into account in our budget. So let's just say food and tax revenue was $100 for the month coming into-
Right, right.
...the county. Instead of giving us the $100, they would reduce it by $6 and give us $94 of revenue so that we wouldn't have a significant impact. So what we've had to do is, as we're collecting gross receipts tax, we factor that in, that reduction each year, that incremental amount, and it averages anywhere from $900 to $1.2 million each year that we have to take into account.
Thank you very, I have never heard that exclamation before.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. It means, it means we're, we're gonna phase it out over 15 years so you may not know you got hurt.
Right. And then there's another thing that they did with that. They also then gave you three 1/8 increments of hold harmless GRTs that you could enact.
Gotcha. Thank you very much. Commissioner Casada, any other questions? Okay, let's move on.
No, I don't, thanks.
Slide 15 contains the detail of the budget and you can see there that payroll-related items, the way we establish our budget, we pull in what we have from '20 and we pick up any known adjustments in payroll that might have occurred during the year. And then we look at the operational expenses of each department and we look at new requests that might have come in during the year and try to factor all of that in as we examine our revenue. So that's what slide 15 kind of covers, the things that we had to take into consideration. If you go on to slide 16, again, what I was just explaining, the, we start with the department's approved budget for FY20, make any adjustments that have come in. We held in-depth reviews and those are meetings where we sit down with the department directors, their budget analysts, the DCMs, the elected officials, and, and just really talk through their budgets and see what their needs are and look at their priorities and try to take all of that into account as we're working through the budget. We've had budget retreats with the county manager and the deputy county managers. We had this year, for the first time, a budget working session with the commissioners on the front end, just kind of saying, "Here's the plan, here's what we do." And like county manager Baca stated, we start this process like in October of the previous year, so October of 2019, we started the process. A lot of it is internal before we even reach out to the departments and then we pull it all together. We work with HR to get the current salary information. We look at the revenue trends and, and do our budgeting, work with our municipal advisor to make sure we're not overestimating growth or unanticipating something that might be a downfall. And like county manager said, we do a conservative approach, so we leave ourselves a little bit of cushion not to be, so that we don't have to come back and make budget reductions if some, if there's an economic downturn, so we can ride the storm. So that's kind of our philosophy. So if you look at slide 17, you can see we have a budgeted, a balanced budget. The DFA requires that we present a balanced budget. So that means your, your revenue have to equal your expenses. If, if your expenses exceed your revenue, you have to reduce your expenses to come in line with the revenue. And that is $340.1 million for, and this is general fund only. So the next slide would be slide 19. And what I'm gonna do here, I'm gonna go through these kind of quickly, but they're just different views of our revenue sources. County manager kind of showed you a trending of the gross receipts tax and the property tax. What this does is just hone in on FY21 of the 340 million. You can see that property taxes make up 42%, gross receipts taxes 51%, and then a bunch of small other miscellaneous type revenue that goes into the general fund. Slide 20 is FY22, not gonna focus on that too much. We, again, we do the revenue projections, but that's what 22 is. Then if you go to slide 22, which is the general fund expenditures, and this is just another view of the world by division. So you can see the county manager, we have MDC separate, finance, community service, public, health and public safety, Public Works, General Services, and the debt service fund. So you can see how the expenditures are broken out by division. It's just a different view. And the commissioner's budget is underneath the county manager, it's included in her figures. Okay? On slide 23, this is another view of the, of the budget. It's, it's a split between your operating budget and payroll. A lot of times, what we, best practices says that your payroll and benefits budget should be no more than 70 to 75% of your entire operating budget. Because what that would translate in, if you had something going on, that's where you would probably have to cut. So you can see that our payroll and benefits budget is about 60%, 66% of our total budget with the operating piece, which are contracts and services and things that, like that, are 34% of the budget. So again, it just breaks it down. And then if you want to see how the payroll budget is broken down further, the top circle graph on the right breaks out benefits and taxes. So salaries, just straight base salaries make up about 57%. You add in benefits and taxes, that's another 30%. Overtime is 6%. And then we have part-time workers and some other contingencies that we have. And then we also factor in our vacancy factor. And that is, for, for those of you that don't remember or are new to that term, what that is, is the time between a position being vacated and being refilled, there's a savings there. We factor that into the budget because we can capture that and we use that to offset expenses. And on average, each year, we average about $15 million of vacancy savings because sometimes it's kind of hard to get the, the, the jobs filled to be, because of the competitive nature of the business. And some of it was processed, we're working on the processes, but it's really, it's just the timing of people applying and going through the process. So we take that into account as well.
And that's probably a historic figure.
Yes.
So you're, you're estimating that. Wow.
Okay, slide 24 is another view.
I wish Commissioner O'Malley would keep her dogs in control.
That's Commissioner Casada.
That's Casada?
I have this feeling.
Okay. Or both of them. Thank, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
That's okay.
Please, Ms. Reagan.
I know, I had to look back on that.
I-
Commissioner O'Malley has grandkids.
Ah.
I've got barking dogs, I'm sorry.
They're cute.
I do have a quick question, though. Could, could, could you explain on page twenty-three, the vacancy factor?
Vacancy factor.
Yes, the vacancy factor, Commissioner, is that time between, say, if I vacate my job, by the time that Julie hires somebody else and goes through the process, it can be anywhere from thirty to sixty or more days. So that unexpended salary is captured and we use that to offset the budget. We use that to also, a certain amount of overtime is within each department's budget, in the public safety, but we also save a contingency just in case it goes over the budget that we have allotted in their department. And so that's what we use to balance the budget. Another piece that we help balance the budget with.
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay. So going on to slide twenty-four, it's a breakdown, another view again of the payroll, union versus non-union, or represented versus non-represented. And you can see that I, I, when I'm working with the rating agencies, they always want to know what is our percentage of uni, of representation because that, they feel that plays a role in management's ability to make widespread changes if necessary because you're bound by those contracts. So if you look at it, you can see that from a salary perspective, fifty-nine percent of our payroll budget is for our unions and forty-one percent is the unrepresented folks or the rules and regulations employees. And if you look at position count, the small graph, the small chart to the right at the bottom, you can see that union employees make up sixty-two percent of, in the general fund of our employee total, which is two, two thousand four hundred and ninety-five, and unrepresented make up thirty-eight percent. We also have some union representation in our non-general funds, like the assessors' valuation fund, the clerks' fund, and some other miscellaneous funds that we have. Again, just another view of the payroll budget.
Surely is, is, you said this is a factor in, in the rating companies who always kind of want to know that because it does affect the way in which management can adjust as they need to. Are we typical, atypical, more, less? I'm sure counties all over the nation have various differences.
I think we're probably typical. What they also factor in is the relationship that the unions have with management.
Gotcha.
And we have a very good relationship, so we haven't had any, you know, injunctions or things like that we can work through the process. So Fitch Rating Agency is probably more critical of that and they tend to want it around fifty percent or less. But this past year, we had eight unions and now we have seven because one dissolved, the court security specialist dissolved. So, and the, the ones that we have are the typical departments that would have unions, like your sheriffs, your fire, your MDC corrections officers, those are the larger ones. And you can kind of see that at the chart at the top, which ones are the larger ones that we have. Then we have the white collar and blue collar as well, and then the Y, the YSC. So you, we have some, a good mixture, but we do have a good working relationship with the, with them. So that is always factored in and has not hurt us as a county as yet.
Right.
But that's just something they always ask. I had to end up putting a chart in the rating agency presentation that kind of showed that information for them.
Thank you.
This is, slide twenty-five is just a split of the operating. Again, it breaks out the contractual services, a lot of, the largest portions of our contractual services are in information technology and then the MDC contracts and our court initiatives. Then we just have a lot of contracts that we have to do to conduct business. So it's just another view of the world. Sometimes I get questions on that. The health, back in eighteen, this is the one, the one-sixteenth, and the tax that we dedicated to public safety. A lot of public safety is paid out of the general fund, but then we enacted another tax just to cover some of the, the needs that they had. And County Manager talked about this earlier, but we didn't have a recurring fleet budget, so we set up one for fire, for sheriff, for MDC, the animal care facility, when we took on those operations totally from the city. So we did some things there. They needed the MDTs, which are the motor, mobile data terminals, which is like a fancy laptop that's protected and, and they have it mounted in their car and it takes all the software so they can, you know, look up arrest warrants and all the things that they need to do while they're out in the field. So we put in a budget for that to try to start addressing those needs. It doesn't quite address it all, but it's making a big dent in what we're trying to do to make sure that our officers and folks are safe out on the streets and have the equipment to do the work that they need to do. Slide twenty-seven is another view. Typically, when we do reporting, they ask us to do it by function. So it's, it, it's combining all functions that fall under public safety, under public works, health and welfare. And this ties into our strategic plans. So you can kind of see, again, public safety is about fifty percent of our budget, no matter how you slice it, it's about fifty percent of our budget. General government, which is where I fall, county manager, community services and things like that are about twenty-six percent of the budget. Slide twenty-eight and slide twenty-nine are small. It's just a summary by fund of all of the funds. I won't go into it. If you have any questions, you can follow up with me. But I think they're just too small to really talk about, other than they're, they're the non-general funds. I think we're focusing more on the general funds, just because that's where the majority of the operations come from. And then slide thirty and thirty-one are FY twenty-two. And slide thirty-two is looking at the, Commissioner Casada had asked about what was in the healthcare GRT. Well, slide thirty-two kind of details that and you can see that the, we pay a large portion of the MDC medical contract out of this, this fund, which is ten point eight million dollars of the medical contract. The medical contract is a little over thirteen million dollars, the other portion comes out of the general fund. Behavioral health, MOU, the methadone maintenance program, UNMH, YSC, Psych Medic. We also are covering the tiny homes, village operating lease, once it gets operational because it fits under that category of indigent care. So these are the sorts of things that get covered out of that. Behavioral health, I use, I'm not going to belabor this one, but Margarita has come up and given updates from time to time. So this is information of all of the initiatives that they have under administrative crisis, prevention, community support and housing. So that's kind of how their expenditures are laid out. So you can see how that one-eighth GRT that generates about, expected to generate about twenty-three and a half million dollars in twenty-one, how those dollars are going to be allocated out. And then there's non-recurring in the behavioral health. This is where you've seen in the past, like the twenty million that went to UNMH for capital. This comes out of the fund balance for that fund. So these are some of the initiatives that they're going to be looking at coming up in twenty-one and they've discussed those. I think she gave updates about those in her, in her quarterly review that she brings to the commissioners. The PILT fund is made up of, there's an economic development piece, there's a piece for UNMH and a piece for APS. So this is revenue that came off of the IRBs, industrial revenue bonds, and so that gets accumulated and that's how it's segregated out. And it, it's right now, those are some of the expenses and the contracts that are being paid out of that fund. We pay our AB, APS, community school coordinators, the UNM Health Services contract for the social services department, and then economic development contracts like for Jill Sweeney that help them perform some of their things. And then they're maintaining some money in case there's any activity that they might want to fund that is in the economic development realm of things.
P-I-L-T stands for?
Payment in lieu of.
Payment in lieu, yeah, in lieu of taxes.
Oh, payment in lieu of taxes.
Payment in lieu of taxes.
Gotcha.
And this talks about the fund balance, so you can see the different pieces of the fund balance on that. And that, again, that's where we do one-time expenditures for something. So if there's some, an initiative that somebody says, "I just need a, a fee of a hundred thousand," if it meets the criteria and it's, it's approved by the county manager, then it's, it can be appropriated and, and spent on that initiative. So our next steps are that, we had the public hearing today. Between now and the end of the month, we'll incorporate any adjustments if necessary. If any of you have any questions or need follow-up or you don't see something that you feel should be in the budget, please let us know and we can have that discussion. Right now, we plan on bringing it, the full budget back to approval on the fourteenth, but we're working with Julianne, depending on the situation with this COVID-19. If we have to move it back, we may move it back to the last meeting in April. I could go as far as the first meeting in April, but it gets, I mean, in May, but it gets kind of tight because we have a, it takes us about a month to get all of the detail, get it in the detail format for DFA. We have to put like every employee in, and these are Excel files that we have to upload. It's a pretty extensive process and they have a certain format that they want it to be in. But we'll do what we have to do to make it work. So during that, we have to submit it to DFA by June first. They normally take thirty days to go over it and make sure that we have the appropriate reserves and that we have budgeted correctly to sustain the expenditures that are come, coming forth. And then usually by the end of the, June, they will send us a letter stating that they are preliminarily accepting our budget and that we are authorized to start spending on July one, which is the beginning of the fiscal year for FY twenty-one.
That sounds like a really tight timeframe.
It is, it is. But we've, a lot of it is automated, but there's still checks and balances and we just want to make sure that we don't miss anything and can explain all of the pieces that.
And DFA is the state agency that all the counties are responsible to.
Correct.
Thank you.
It's the Department of Finance and Administration. They have a budgeting section and they have an accounting section. And so they usually send out a requirements letter. We have to report on the accounting side quarterly, how we're doing budget to actual. We have to report any changes that we make in the budget during the year. So there's a continual reporting that we do to DFA. We have to go back in Septembers and, and true up to actuals. So at the end, our fiscal year end closes at the, it's June thirtieth, so we process all of, like, I'll, I'll just use fiscal year twenty, we'll process all of that data. And then we look at expenditures that come in or are paid between July one and about September. And we have to examine those from an audit perspective and from an accounting perspective. If they pertain to the prior fiscal year, we have to record them in that fiscal year. So we have to make those adjustments and then those dollars are carried over into the twenty-one so that the expenditures can be paid. So we do accruals and things like that. So we come back in September to the commission with any adjustments that we have to make and then we have to report that to DFA and then they give us our final budget for the year.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So with that, I stand for any questions and I have, we're available to meet with you or if you have any questions now.
Commissioner Casada, Commissioner O'Malley, any questions?
Chair, I think that the only comment I'd like to make after kind of going over this, you know, kind of overview, is I'm pretty impressed by the behavioral health because of the administrative costs compared to the services that are being provided. It's very impressive because I know they do it with a very small staff. If you look at that chart, it's, you know, it's a very small percentage of about, of what we're actually doing with the behavioral health. So I'd really like to, you know, congratulate and thank the county and Margarita for, for the job that they're doing. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let's move on.
Okay, if I might say.
Yes, please.
I just wanted to, again, reiterate what County Manager has said, to thank all the departments, the elected officials. Everybody has really been a real trooper and really focused on doing the right things for the right reasons, evaluating their services, trying to be proactive if, you know, when state legislation comes down, like House Bill 407 on the, that's drastically affecting the clerk and affecting the treasurer with the property tax collections and the clerk with voting. So all of those things end up creating expenditures for potential increase in expenditures for the county. So we've been working on trying to make sure that we, we're doing what we need to do to provide those services and monitoring that. So all those sorts of things, you know, there's a give and take on that kind of stuff. So there's still a lot of demands out there, needs out there. I won't say that we've met every need, but we tried to meet the priorities and, and we constantly reevaluate those priorities. So today it might be A and tomorrow it might be B or it might be AB or, you know, and we, we're constantly juggling and, and monitoring that. So, and I also appreciate the support of the commissioners. Whenever I've gone to you all, even in the hard times, asking for a tax increase, it was painful a lot of times, but you, you still support it because you understood what the, what the real need was and the impact on what that was. And so we try to do those things. And this is, again, just the operating budget. You've got the whole other side with the capital, with the GO bonds and all of that. And you all have done a great job of, we try to keep that where we don't increase the debt service mill levy rate. So as Julie said, we're trying to be conservative and we're really trying to manage and live within our means, but yet meet most of the demands that we have to provide services to the community of Burnoville County.
Well, on, on behalf of the commissioners, let me say very clearly to the county leadership, this is a robust relationship we have. It is a great, flexible organization that works well because we trust each other and I think it's, it's a, it's a really great form of governance that is unique and very special and serves the people of Burnoville County very well. So we are grateful that you all are doing what you do and you do it very well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner.
County Manager, do we have anything else for the budget hearing?
I believe this concludes our presentation. And again, if you all have any questions at this time, we stand for questions. And also, you know, we can also meet with you individually to discuss your questions or concerns.
Thank you. Julianne?
Just for the record, we did not receive any online public comment for this hearing.
Thank you for that. We were able, and I should have announced that at the beginning, we were able to receive public comment. All hearings provide for that. We provided for it electronically in this meeting and none were received. Thank you. With that, this budget hearing is adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner.[1757.53]
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
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 Thank you, Commissioner.